Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead right now and start the study session on the Public Service or Public Safety Commission. Councilman Tom Wenzel, you said you had something you'd like to start with, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I'm just gonna read a couple of things that it's like a 10-minute presentation. I don't know if... Did anybody else besides the council get this little four-page packet? Anybody else? Well, anyway, I guess it might be a...
Do we have any more available?
Are they outside?
Nope.
If somebody can have my copy here.
Okay. I have additional.
Well, councilman, why don't you just go ahead and read it?
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and read it. This was a little presentation that...
And then, I'm sorry if I can interrupt you. If you don't mind, maybe afterwards, give a copy to clerks and then they could have it available to the public later.
I think, do you have a copy already at the office? Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, this is just a brief summary of beginning thoughts on the Public Safety Commission. Our intent by co-sponsoring this request to establish a Public Safety Commission was to do something good for the overall safety and well-being of the residents of Dearborn Heights. Our mission for this commission, our vision for this commission largely involves public relations aspect with our fire department, police department. We would also include our DPW ordinance and the emergency management departments. Other departments may be added if deemed necessary by the commission. Some areas that the commission could address can be citywide neighborhood watch program. We have several excellent satellite neighborhood watch programs scattered throughout our city. We see no reason why we should not have the entire city involved in a neighborhood watch program. We should be seeking funding for these neighborhood watch programs. We should set a goal to have every street in Dearborn Heights involved in a neighborhood watch program within 12 months. The commission could look into the city budgeting for possibly two neighborhood watch police officers to help our residents establish and maintain top-notch neighborhood watch programs. The commission could assist the fire department in promoting their events, including Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is a great awareness program for our residents. Our fire department does a great job promoting Fire Safety Week, but they can't do it alone. Any firefighter will tell you that smoke detectors are an absolute essential in every home. Our fire department has a great smoke detector giveaway program. This program includes installing smoke detectors, if necessary, in our neighbors' homes. We know for a fact that a large percentage of homes in Dearborn Heights do not have properly working smoke detectors. This potentially could be a matter of life and death. The commission could help get the word out about this program. Another great program the fire department has is the File of Life, which is a refrigerator magnet packet containing vital medical information about the occupants of their home in the event that the person needing assistance is the only one home at that time. The commission could also assist promoting fundraisers such as the annual firefighter's chili cook-off and making the public aware of charities such as the Great Lakes Burn Camp. The commission could help and assist with the DPW issues. As a city councilman, a large number of the calls we get are related to DPW issues, which include trash pickup, tree issues, and street and sidewalk damage problems. The other majority of the calls we receive are ordinance-related. Tall grass and especially blight situations are major concerns involving public safety. Both of these problems are directly related to rats having a place to live, which is definitely a public safety hazard. Some cities involve the police department and ordinance enforcement. This is something that the commission could look into, possibly. We realize that staffing is a main issue citywide. We could definitely look into ways of attracting qualified people onto our payroll. The section of the charter which provides for establishment of Public Safety Commission was written long ago. We feel that the department heads, officers, and union representation have established general policies for their departments that are functioning well. The commission has absolutely no intent on writing policy for these departments. The commission would assist, consist of, but not limited to representatives from all the departments involved, along with representatives from our senior citizens and school districts. Also, participants may be added who would be deemed necessary while forming a commission. Our main goal is public peace and safety of persons and property in our great city of Dearborn Heights. This commission will build a bridge between our various departments and the residents. Our goal is to attract quality people to create a great place to work and live. This commission can be an important piece of the puzzle moving our city forward into the future. Now, there's a couple of things that we talked about. This is one of the definitions that we came up with that we were considering. "The commission shall act as an advisory capacity for formatting recommendations pertaining to law enforcement, crime prevention, and control code enforcements, animal control, and emergency preparedness." Other duties and functions as be provided by..." Well, this is a section I took off of a neighbor in the city, so we're gonna delete that section of the code there. Let's see. We'll skip over to, "The commission shall have the advisory role only and shall have no authority to control, supervise, or direct any city staff or any law enforcement personnel." It says, "The duties of the commission would be to advise the city council on matters relating to law enforcement, including but not limited to policing, crime prevention, and emergency services; to represent the views of the citizenry relating to law enforcement plans, programs, and future needs; to consult with professional staff in the development of law enforcement programs." That's be like a neighborhood watch program, things like that. "To enlist community interest and support for the city's law enforcement programs; to work with citizens, elected and appointed officials, and professional staff to support the work of the law enforcement, crime prevention, and emergency service officers and deputies." There's a couple of things that we want to look into also if we get this commission formed is, we like our fire department, I believe, if the fire department may be the only one, maybe the police, I'm not sure, but they have job fairs at all of our high schools to make aware of the employment opportunities with the city of Dearborn Heights, not only fire and police, but all the departments that we have that we're seeking employees. Crossing guard opportunities, very few people realize that our crossing guards are actually paid for by the, out of the budget of the police department, and it's not a volunteer thing. They do get paid for it. Not too many people realize that. And we want to work on improving student drop-off procedures at all of our schools. That's pretty obvious. We get a lot of complaints about that. A streetlight committee for the Public Service Safety Commission, disability advocates. One of the things that I'm really interested in this is the disaster hazard situation, a cooperative program with all the Public Safety Commission departments. In the event, you know, we just had this big flood, and I think we did pretty good just scrambling around and getting everything organized, and I don't think we do. If we do, I don't know of an emergency disaster plan for the entire city with all the departments involved. I'm not sure if we do. If we do, I don't know, like I said. And one of the things that I found out, I did some research, and there's a lot of these cities going to these ring doorbells. And they've got a program where several people on the block ring doorbells. They're hooked up to the same computer program, and you could track someone from one end of the block to the other. And they have five or six of these ring doorbells. Not one person go down that street without being caught on tape on these doorbells. Different things like that are things that we'd like to look into, and that's what we come up with just, you know, just off the last couple of weeks. Does anybody have any questions?
Councilman Robert Conson, go ahead.
You know, you mentioned all these different things, these like...
Bring the microphone to you. The microphone closer to you.
Neighborhood watch. We have a neighborhood watch. We have community policing. How to set that up, how to do that. The chili cook-off, the burn camp, all this. Those programs are taken care of now by our existing police and fire department. How will a commission of citizens who, unless they have training and background, I mean, the community is involved with the chili cook-off, with neighborhood policing? Chief, who do we have that's our community police officer now? It was Tom Seacott. Is it still Tom Seacott?
(inaudible)
But being funded through CDVG, you're only allowed to do work in CDVG areas, correct?
Right. Chief, if you don't mind, so that the camera can get this, if you don't mind coming up here, please? Sorry to bother you. Thank you.
So first, well, Chief, or Chief, where am I myself? We've never seen this four-page document that had all these... So we're gonna be waiting in here? The best I can tell you, because yeah, it's been brought to us by, for community policing, Carrie Hatt, community police officer. She works with the Gulfview Sub, she works with the South Dearborn Heights Sub. We have officers attend those meetings. Everywhere that has the neighborhood groups she's working with already is a community police officer, but some of her salary is subsidized through CDVG. I get the initials wrong, but we actually get money every year to help subsidize her income, so we're already doing that program, which is one of the ones that I heard that was mentioned that wanted to be created.
I just went to the dinner with the, for the Gulfview Manor Civic Association. She was there, and the president, Leila, said she attends every meeting. So how, if at all, would having a commission increase that or do anything more for it?
I would leave that up to the people recommending it. I don't know.
Well, in your opinion, you know, what percentage of the homes in Dearborn Heights are in a neighborhood watch program? 50%? 75?
No way.
5?
So, however many that choose to be.
Yeah.
The commissions are out there. Mrs. Breyer, who's going to be the council, she mentions it at every meeting. Anybody can take part in it. They're not forced to. There's no forced participation, so it's up to the individual household to choose to become active in their community.
And I believe that's where a commission can come in handy, is to pursue these neighborhoods, to join a neighborhood watch program and get them started and point them in the right direction.
I don't think any two work together.
But that would have to be a police officer to help set up, so we don't have vigilantism or, that would need to be a police officer, not members of a commission. Let's say I'm on the commission, my friend Leslie Winless, Rachel LaPointe, and Ray. You know, we don't know the background checks maybe are needed, not needed. That would have to be something done by the police department, correct?
Yeah, that's what...
I don't know what people want this to look like, so I can't really answer. I'm asking hypotheticals, so I can't answer what you're asking, other than every time you create something new that's going to, that means that either somebody's gonna be taken away from the job that they're doing, or we're gonna have to hire and create more positions. Those are something that this body would have to deal with, so I can't say any of those.
But as far as like a neighborhood watch program, to institute that, I know I, in my neighborhood, in the Brookside subdivision, if I were to do it, I would have to get some background. I would have to know the do's and don'ts, privacy concerns. That's something that's best done by the police department, correct?
No, they don't do that.
We don't have that now.
It depends on the design of what you're looking at. He mentioned the ring doorbell. Great idea. We could, it's something that can be explored, but somebody has to watch it, and there's privacy issues that come along with that, because there's other people that don't want to be watched all the way up and down. So there's all types of, on paper, everything sounds great. Implementation can be very different. We're here to serve our citizens, but I don't even have the things that were on there, so I'm trying to go off of memory, off of what you just read.
You know, going back to the ring doorbell and privacy issues, well, it's no different than a camera. My camera on my house, people are calling me up and asking me to view my camera to see when their car got hit. So am I violating somebody's privacy by doing so?
That would be, I'd leave to corporation counsel, but there are issues when it starts being sent to the police department.
Well, you know, police department's got my videos. They requested them, and I gave them freely, so I don't see the difference between all of that.
Once again, I'm going back to, I don't know what the intent is. Are you going to livestream them to the police, or are you just gonna turn them over to the police? These are all different issues.
Well, I think that's something the commission, a commission would have to deal with.
If I could finish, that just creates another body that has to sit there and watch those livestreamed if you want to have some type of surveillance, citywide surveillance. I don't think that's what people particularly may want, but if you're talking about ring doorbell in that capacity, I would say that we would have some legal issues that we'd have to grapple with as well. Little different than what we're gonna talk about later on in the agenda, which is capturing license plates. Lot different when you're capturing and livestreaming to the police department, human beings.
The program that I saw, it was each little neighborhood watch had their own little, you know, computer where the feed went into it, and in the event that there was an issue, they could give it to the police department. It wasn't something that was constantly monitored by the police. And that's what we want to do, is we want to talk about these things. I mean, we have several neighborhood watches, and they're all kind of got their own way of doing things, and I've talked to all of them, and you know, one of our better ones, Andrea Cooper, is involved with it, and she said that she would definitely love to have some cooperation with other neighborhood watches, even north and south and, you know, all over the city. That's just one of the things. These aren't things that, you know, this is it right here. These are just suggestions that a couple of us came up with and were wide open. And on the commission, it would, like I stated here, the commission would consist of representatives from every department, fire, police, DPW ordinance.
Councilman? So I have two questions for you. Number one, you mentioned that you had modeled this after another city, the paper that you read. You'd gotten it from, I don't know if it's from a website or wherever it's from, but you got it from another cities. Remember you were mentioning it?
Yeah, just one...
And I'm just curious, which city specifically? And the reason I'm asking this is, I'm just wondering, you know, as far as their policing, their fire, and how that's working, and how that's helping, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So which city was it? Do you remember?
Well, the only thing I got off the internet was on page three, I want you to know, on page, what page was it? Yeah, on page three where it says, "The Duties," and that was the top paragraph where...
Oh, I see.
It says, you know, where it says, "A Section," you know, that's their ordinance. And that was, I believe, a thing that was done for Colorado.
Oh, so not local, okay.
Not local. But everything else was, you know, came up with, you know, talking to the commission, to the members here, me and Ray and Zohair, and just coming up with ideas. These are, this is to get us talking. That's what this is all about.
Okay.
It's like Bob's questions, or Councilman, Conson's questions.
So who would have oversight? In other words, if hypothetically this commission were approved, who would have oversight over who? Would it be the, the commission have an oversight over the fire and the police department? Or would the, who would be the authoritative figure to make a final decision? We're not talking about how to make a run, but just the specifics of whatever it is the particular commission would recommend.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
The commission will have no authority to set any policy, okay? The policy is left to the police, the fire, DPW, whatever department, okay? And even our city charter says, "Each department is outlined, and this section shall be administered by a commission consisting of not less than three members. Their primary function shall be state that formulating policy and program to carry out a formulated policy." We don't, the commission will not be telling anybody what to do. This is just an outreach to the public, just like any other commission does, okay? We have a commission for unaging, that mean, okay? Now, how many people know about that? Okay? And there's a lot of commissions that we had in this city that were put on a back burner that we need to move forward with again.
But the concern that I've got is, you've got something that's working. I mean, you know, the fire and the police department have had their little issues here and there, just like my business had issues here and there, and every department's got issues here and there. But overall, it's a pretty fine-tuning machine, and I just don't see how adding something into the puzzle, I don't see how that's gonna potentially make it better. But with that being the case, I also know that Councilman Zohair Abdallah had mentioned that he's got something that he has to say. Is this, if you don't mind, go ahead.
After everybody is...
We're all set, Ray, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Then I have a question after Councilman Abdallah.
Okay.
You said, Dave, that if something is good, working, do not fix it. Now, was there a problem with all those departments we created commissions for, and we came in, we approved tens of commissions to fix those problems, or it's only this touchy subject which is related to the police and fire? I'm going to read from section 515, our charter. E, "Each department, as outlined in this section, shall be administered by a commission consisting of not less than three members. Their primary function shall be that of formulating policy and programming to carry out formulated policy. The commissioner shall receive nominal compensation, as shall be determined by council." We are not going to basically boss the police and fire. We are looking to engage our resident more and more. Look and see the traffic. Look and see how many accidents we have. Look and see the drag racing, the speeding. Lots of things we can do in cooperation with the police and fire and the residents. We need people to get involved. And the charter stated clearly, "Each department, if the previous administrations did not do their job, it is up to this administration to follow the charter and create those commissions without any hesitance." That's what I needed to say, and I don't think, you know, the system is broken at the police and fire, but only this commission, I see the opposition to it furiously. Why? We have commissions for everything in this city and no one. No one objected. Seven to zero, we voted on everyone. Why this one? I'm not afraid of police and fire or to raise my voice and say what I feel and what I want to do. I never meant to go and step on their toes. All I want is to have more participation from our resident in lots of things which are related to the police and fire in every department, not just police and fire. We have many commissions which are not created, which is a violation of section 515, section E. It is a clear cut. If the council or anybody can tell me this is wrong, please raise your voice and tell me the charter is wrong.
So I've got a quick question, Councilman. So on here it says, "The primary function shall be that of formulating policy." Can you define for me, and I know you're not the writer of the charter at one point, but...
I'm not the writer of the charter. I'm going to answer the question you're going to ask.
What would, what would formulating policy, because I can tell you right now, I can tell you my definition of what formulating policy would be, and I'm gonna tell you respectfully, I have a problem with me, even myself, who's pretty involved with community formulating policy for a police or fire department. I can't see how I could tell these guys any type of policy, in my opinion. So define it from your perspective, and I'm gonna have Councilman Robert Conson answer.
Again, there is Act 78. We cannot over it. We cannot override it. We know this. And there are state laws. There are contracts between the city and the police. We will never step on them. All what we want is to get more participation from our residents. I want the police and the residents to feel they are one unit. They trust each other. They work together for the betterment of the city, not to go and create policies for them to tell them who to hire, who to fire, or who to give raise or not. The policies are there. We just want to help with other things, other issues.
And I respect it, but then, but then if we're gonna follow the charter by saying that we want 5E in there, and I'm gonna tell you bluntly, Councilor Gary Miatki, reading that, I mean, it does sound like, yeah, we have to have one, quite honestly, just from my little contract-reading knowledge. But if we're gonna follow it based on that, then we gotta follow what's in that particular charter, the specific word of saying, "Formulating policy." And right now, Councilman, you mentioned, we're not gonna be formulating policy, but if we're gonna follow this, to put this commission in place, then we also have to follow it by formulating policy. That's why I started to have a challenge with that.
Councilman Abdallah, with my respect, we cannot override the state and the federal laws. We can follow what we have. We know our charter is over 60-some years old.
Correct.
And that's why we passed the resolution, and I personally let it, you know, go until January, so the new council members will decide what to review, not the ones, you know, who are the old ones on the city council. That's why I want to review the charter, and this is one of my main goals, being on the city council, is to review the charter. And we will follow every legal step, from Act 78, from any state law, any internal policies they have, which they feel that we might be stepping on their authorities. We will not do it. I don't want to be on the commission, by the way, so nobody thinks that I'm doing this because I want to be on the commission. No, I just want more people to be involved. There is a huge diversity change in the city. Let people get involved, from every color, every race, every religion, to help the police so we understand each other. That's what we need to do. We need to understand each other. We need to help each other. There is lots of problems in the city, and nobody can tell me that we don't have problems in the city. It's enough for me, the speeders who are on the streets. I need to, when we have a business, and I'm going to say it bluntly, when we have a business which have, drive it through, which endanger the life of the people, and the police cannot do anything about it, because the planning commission, the city council, approved the plans, and that is a big example. Starbucks, I'm going to call it flat out. A person died there. What did we do? We need to find solution, because we have businesses growing. We need to help these businesses in suggestions and finding solutions with the police for those people. That's our intention, and no, in no way we are intending to dictate to the police and fire anything which they are not already doing perfectly.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair?
And just for clarification, the person, God rest her soul, that passed away at Ford Road was not due to Starbucks or, it just happened to be within a block.
It did, that area. I have pictures from this morning, actually, on my phone, this morning. The road was blocked, and the cars were on Ford Road waiting for somebody to go get a cup of coffee. They blocked John Daly, and I have it here if anybody would like to see it, this morning at 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Councilman Bob Conson.
Thank you. And I think it would be a good idea for us to have a commission. Citizen input is always good, but our charter has a lot of provisions that were put in the charter when the city first began. Constables, municipal judges, electing of a court officer for the city. The issue becomes, there are lawsuits. I know there was a circuit court lawsuit filed that I assisted another attorney on in Brownstown Township between, basically... The issue becomes, there are lawsuits. I know there was a circuit court lawsuit filed that I assisted another attorney on in Brownstown Township between, basically, the township board and another board in the city who had jurisdiction over what. Regarding the stacking lanes at Starbucks, if it's not working, they will have to be cited, and it'll have to be redone. That's an issue with any car wash, or with the Dairy Queen, or anywhere. But I think we're all going around the same thing, you know, what the role of the commission will be, and especially when I hear about, like, the speeders, or, nobody likes the speeders. Nobody, everybody's, I sit in my office, when we used to have the meetings via Zoom, and people could hear the roar of the traffic, and I sometimes couldn't hear because people driving around with no mucklers, but these are a lot of the goals. I don't know how having this commission will help stop the speeding in our neighborhoods, possibly have somebody going out to the high schools, talking to the high schoolers about traffic safety. Chief Myers, what do we have now as far as enforcement for, to catch speeders? Are we writing tickets and so forth?
Wait, Councilman, if you don't mind, I want you to answer him, Chief, if you don't mind, but let's keep a brief answer, because I don't want to, now we're going off subject, I don't want to switch the thing to become about speeding in the city. That's definitely a problem, but that's for a whole nother meeting. So go ahead, Chief, at least a short answer.
So, over the summer, we created new programs. So, like anything else, manpower becomes an issue, people become an issue, the workforce becomes an issue. Twelve square miles, 64,000 people now under our last census, 10% more than we had at the previous census. They all come with additional cars. Our traffic's heavier than it's ever been. We're facing it with our neighboring communities, where we participated in Operation Bryson with the city of Detroit, because we know that crime's transient on the major thoroughways, to try to crack down on these, because if we can crack down on speeding and the stolen cars and the drag racing, it can also translate into lower crime rates in your city. We increased patrols in the summertime from Memorial Day to Labor Day, because we know that summer and the heat brings out more people at night. We dealt with it during our Ramadan festival at night to make sure people are safe. We have to change that manpower in the school year, because now we have high school football games, we have basketball games starting, prom. We have to reallocate our manpower based on our current staffing model, and what we're allowed to, and what our taxpayers are willing to pay to have police officers out on the street, and we're maximizing our efficiency. So you asked me about the violations? We're probably close to 10,000 violations, if not 16,000. I get two numbers, I don't know if it's actual contacts, or if it's violation issues. I can write violation after violation. If people are willing to play their tickets, if they're willing to drive on suspended license, if they're willing to get their vehicles out of impound, they'll come back out and continue to do it. Our officers are out there diligently, we're trying to prevent the crashes, so the firemen don't have to come out. Every one of these have models. We'll speak at commissions, we go to, we do Facebook, and I'm sorry, Council Chair, I'm talking for a few minutes. We had a traffic issue by City Hall, we did a Facebook post with the school to try to get their drivers around the school, their parents to cooperate with the safety. We're thinking outside the box, working with the school districts, working with the businesses, trying to come up with solutions, but at the end of the day, we can write violations and hope people will comply, but right now, metro-wide, people aren't complying with traffic, so I don't know. I don't know, so going back to the big picture, I believe we're doing what we can do. I don't know if it's the resolution, and it's up to this board to decide if a commission could actually solve that.
So I'm gonna let Councilman Ray Muscat speak, and I'm gonna give both of you chiefs, if you don't mind, whether you're pro or con for this commission, if you don't mind, if you could prepare something in your heads, maybe two minutes each, as far as how you feel about this potential vote on this. Councilman Ray Muscat.
If this commission was to be formed, and this is hypothetical, if it was to be formed, an ordinance would have to be written, and then in the ordinances, would, you know, our council, our corporation council would write the ordinance, and in that ordinance can be specified exactly what the commission can and can't do. So that would be something that we could look into or look forward to, that, you know, we make sure that the police are involved, and the fire is involved, and all the department heads involved in what they would like to see themselves. Okay? This is the thing about working together. This is just not, you know, two or three members of city council say, "I'd like to have this," and then go ahead and vote on it and say, "Yes, okay, we got it." Okay? This is something that's concerning all the department heads, their inputs, okay? And then, you know, just because council approves this commission, and we can't get it all together in the wording that corporation council deems it be proper, then the commission could be absolved, okay? But it's a starting point for something, and that's all it is, is a starting point. We all had starting points somewhere, and we started somewhere to the moon. Nobody knew it was gonna work, but they started somewhere, and they got it.
But the challenge I've got, Councilman, is the proposal sounds like this is the end-all, be-all, like this is gonna solve... Well, I know, but honestly, the talking points sound great, because it sounds like it's gonna be something that's gonna solve every potential problem in the city, as far as police and fire is concerned, whether it's speeding, drugs, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And I just, I'm just telling you, I could see somebody, some sort of an advisory board, some sort of meetings on a regular basis with the fire or the police department, whether it's from council members or the general public. I just, I don't know, I just personally, honestly, I'm not sold on it. But before you start, both chiefs, if you don't mind, I want, Gary, if you could give me just a minute of your time, and I'm gonna have Councilman Tom Wenzel go, and I'll have the chief's go, but Councilor Gary Miyatki, if you don't mind, the clause in there, and you're obviously way more advanced than I am, I mean, it does say, from what I'm reading, and from my contract-reading experience in my business, I mean, it does say, we pretty much have to have one. What's your opinion on this? And I'm not sure if you could give a final opinion today, maybe, you know?
No, I feel, here's the interesting thing. Councilman Abdallah spoke about Section 515-E, and that does mandate having these commissions. Notice, we've never had them. As a matter of fact, I haven't known of a single one of these commissions existing in all the time that I've been doing any legal work for the city. I don't think I've heard anyone even mention them. And a lot of times, it's because commissions, when you create them, you have to end up having people on them, and if you're not going to get enough interest, then you're just going to have commissions that don't do anything, and then, or they're just going to fall apart because they're inadequate for the purpose. So I'm not saying that the charter does not mandate them with respect to each of the departments. What I'm saying is, I think as a practical matter, that's why these things haven't taken place, and all the administrations that I've been involved in, going back to Mayor Van Houghton. So that's Section 515. If you look at Section 5.9, there is not actually a mandate. Section 5.9A says, "The council shall be authorized to establish by ordinance a public safety commission, which shall provide for the public peace and safety of persons and property in the city." When it says that the council is authorized, what it's saying is it has the discretion to establish, but is not required to. So this commission is not required, even if there are other commissions that could be required. On the other hand, there's no requirement to end up having a community and cultural relations commission, there's no requirement to have a commission on aging. These are all commissions that can be created by acts of the city council, by way of ordinance.
So are you stating that 5.9 overrides 5.15E?
I'm sorry?
You're saying 5-29 overrides the Section E that we have on the line?
No, I would say if you were to construe the two sections together, that the only, the most reasonable way to interpret these is that a public safety commission is authorized, but not required, but the departmental commissions are mandated. And notice that a departmental commission would mean one for police, one for fire, one for DPW, one for each of the individual departments. So in terms of, I don't see them as being in conflict, and to the degree that one might consider them to be in conflict, I would say that because 5.9 is more specific in terms of the public safety commission, that to the degree it has to do with the public safety commission, 5.9A would trump 5.15E, because it specifically has to do with the public safety commission. Even though, again, in my view, 5.15E has to do with departmental commissions, 5.9 has to do with a public safety commission that pertains to, and let's make sure that we talk about it, B says, "This commission shall establish and administer the general policies of the police and firefighting functions of the city." In other words, it involves two different departments within city government, but it does not have to exist unless, well, it does not have to exist under the charter, but it may exist, and the council has the authority to pass an ordinance for that purpose.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Councilman Tom Wenzel.
A few things, is we gotta get past this and look at the overall picture. This is not only a fire and police issue, this is a public safety in all aspects, sidewalks, streetlights. The streetlight situation in Dearborn Heights, we have a program where it's reported, it's put into a program to DTE, and then no one ever checks to see if the streetlights are ever fixed. That's a fact. So that's something this commission. Chief Myers stated all kinds of things that the police department's doing now, that's what this commission could relate this to the public. I never knew half of them things, more than half of them things he was saying, I didn't know they were doing that. This is something to get the people involved. Instead of having questions after questions, we can inform the people. That's what this is all about, informing the people. I talked, in the last month, I took time, and I talked to as many police officers as I could, and I asked them one, all of them, same question, does Dearborn Heights have a curfew? Not one of the police officers said, "Yes, we do, and it's this time." A lot of them say, "I think we do, I'm not sure of the time, I think it might be 10:00 or 11:00." A couple of them said, "I don't even think, I don't know if we have a curfew or not." That's just something that, you know, it's general knowledge, people see kids walking around the streets, should they call? Is there a curfew? You know, we don't know that. And the disaster preparedness, I don't know, Mr., do we have an entire department city-wide disaster program? I hope we do, and I hope it, I just don't know about it, but in the event of a flood, it should be, hey, open up the book, here's the first thing we do. You know, we should have a program for floods, man-made disasters, or natural disasters. And the, Councilman Zuhair was reading, that the formulating, the commission shall formulate a policy for programming, the policy that we format could say, each department has their opportunity to make their own policy in general operation. That could be our way of getting out of that part of it. That could be our policy that we're issuing.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
But I just want to say one more thing, though, you know, things like the fire department, I haven't missed a chili cook-off in years. I bring my whole family there every year, and I would, it gets crowded, but I'd love to see 10 times as many people there. It's a great event. The charities that they're involved with are awesome, and they do promote it, but I'll ask any person in this room, how much spare time do you have? And everybody will say, "I don't have any spare time." Well, thank you, because that's what this commission can help you with. If you have something you want to get out to the public, go to the commission, say, "Hey, this is something I want out there, I want known by the whole community of Dearborn Heights."
Counselor Chair.
Thank you. So, just give me one second. I'm gonna allow you, if you don't, everybody's gotta be brief, because we're almost out of time. So, Councilman, if you don't mind, if you could be brief, and I'm allowed the two chiefs to speak, and then the mayor will go next.
My question to Mr. Miyatki, you've been in the city for over 20 years, if I'm not mistaken?
I was originally appointed an assistant corporation counsel in November of 1988. Served in that capacity until April of 1991, came back when Mayor Canfield was elected as an assistant corp counsel, and when Laura Barry Harris stepped down as an assistant corp counsel, I became corp counsel and have served in that capacity.
Was that links of service? You must know how many commissions, because you wrote the ordinances for each and every one of them.
For quite a few of them, and that's part of the problem, is that sometimes they just...
Which commissions we have in the city, and they are not working properly or not active?
One that comes to mind is the commission, the youth commission?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, it looked like it was gonna be going well, and then it just...
How about the housing commission?
The women's commission? The housing commission?
The Asian commission.
The housing commission is an interesting one, because...
City Beautiful Commission, how many awards we gave to residents for their beautiful Christmas decoration, or their gardens, or homes. Did we ever give anything to those people? No, we never did. We have so many commissions which are not active, and I don't know why they are still there, while you have people who are willing to work with, by hand, with the police and fire, to come up with more probably visionary ideas, improve things in the city, and I don't see, when we have that big commissions doing nothing, still there, and we have people who are willing to do things, we are not encouraging them, and we are opposing them. And I rest my case.
Thank you, Councilman. So, the two chiefs, if you don't mind, maybe three minutes each, two, three minutes each, your opinion in regards to this commission, and you have an open field, say whatever you need to say, and then we'll have our mayor speak next.
Okay, sure, I could tell you, good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor. My initial concerns was what you exactly said, the line in there about formulating policy. That's why there was some resistance from me in particular, and I'm sure Chief Myers feels the same way. We can't have untrained people writing policies for the fire department, you know, the safety of the public and the safety of the firefighters is our number-one priority, and that would work against that. They just, that wouldn't be something that would be understood. And so, this is also the first time I've seen this, so just trying to look through it, there are a couple of areas of concern I have, like on page three, the first bullet point, "To advise city council on matters relating to law enforcement, including but not limited to police and emergency services." So, I kind of feel that's my job when it comes to the fire department. If city council needs to be advised on something going on in the fire department, I don't necessarily want a third party describing the needs of the fire department to you.
You're absolutely right.
And then there's, kind of on the same vein, "To work with citizens, electing appointed officials." Again, I'm not opposed, but to have a third party now giving the views of the fire department, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Dave, please let me just say one.
Okay, wait, let me just make sure. Chief, I'll allow you, I'll allow you. Chief, are you all set, and you're in?
Well, you know, I guess, I'm trying to see, just to wrap up, I'm trying to find what would be best to meet the goals that you guys are after, maybe establishing like some focus groups, where we can go meet with the focus groups and get some feedback, but having the ultimate decision-making, and coming from the fire department, I mean, around fire department matters, to come from the fire department, I guess, that's my concern and my issues.
That is exactly why we want police and fire to participate in this commission, because we want to hear from you, how we can help you, how we can do things to make your job easier.
To be members of this commission.
To take off your back probably some things we can do, or the residents can do. Instead, you spend money and time and manpower. Let residents who are willing to do these things do it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Chief, Police Chief Myers, please.
Thanks, Chief Brogan.
Thank you, Chief.
So, much of this stems from, and there's not much I'm gonna say that the fire chief has it, other than when we first were brought this, there was no conversation, nobody said, "Hey, chiefs, we're thinking about this." Nobody gave us, "This is what we're looking into." I did get, you know, this today, and we want to work with the citizens, come up with solutions, like the Ring Doorbell that you brought. It's a great idea, but it's not always practical. So to come here and say, "We're gonna implement all these things," it'd be great if we could talk about it, but it doesn't mean we can do these things. So it is a good thing to have a commission for that. But if you start talking about the actual wording that Mr. Miyatki said, where it said, "Police and fire policy and functions," that can't happen. It can't happen for many reasons, for accreditation purposes, for licensing purposes, for criminal and civil action purposes. So that was our concern. It's not working with citizens, it's understanding, and there were some things said at the last meeting of, "Just make the commission..." were some things said at the last meeting of, "Just make the commission and we'll decide what it does afterwards." That was very alarming to our membership. I might have misquoted that, but it was something along those lines. That's when our officers come and say, they wanna create something to decide how we police or how we fire. We need to actually have this conversation, but we need the cart to go behind the horse so we can figure out what's going on, not first. The police department and the fire department are always willing to do it, we can't always make those things happen, though, for various reasons. And that's where, if we butt heads with a commission, it has to be an open dialogue because there's gonna be things that are wanted that can't happen for either legal reasons, contractual reasons, philosophical reasons, whatever that is, because the safety of our employees are our primary concern.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, council chair. So listening to everyone speak, it sounds like you guys like really requesting something like a community liaison commission, you know, with all the departments that you mentioned with DPW, building, ordinance, police, fire. I mean, it does sound, doesn't sound like a civil, you know, commission as much as like a community liaison organization or commission and that somebody can actually be the liaison between the residents and the different departments within the city. And, I mean, that's what I gathered from all the discussions we had today. And also the other thing, you know, Mr. Miyaki mentioned with the different commissions, there is a lot of commissions, actually, this, funny that you guys brought that up today is because we actually had a discussion about it today with my chief of staff going through all the commissions and some of them haven't been updated since 2012, 2013 and so some of the people on there, I don't even know who they are. So this is something that we're looking at, we're gonna evaluate these commissions to see if we really need those particular commissions because, I mean, since I've been appointed since January, I haven't heard or talked to anybody other than, you know, very few commissioned, we have one over here, you know, something that is really active with the city, that does a lot with the city, but there's like two, three that I'm aware of that are very active commissions, but everyone else, you know, I just don't want something to be, somebody's really excited about bringing something on board and all of a sudden, then, you know, it just lags behind or somebody doesn't wanna be part of it and it's just something that we wasted money creating a bunch of ordinances, documents for that particular commission. But I think, you know, what you guys are really leaning towards the way they sound of it is something like a community liaison, you know, commission, I mean, is that...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's exactly right. I just, I'd like everyone to just, you know, get it out of their head that this is a commission to tell the fire and police what to do. It's definitely not that and it's like everyone is prepared to talk about that and it's the least thing, there's not one thing in this four pages that says it's gonna tell what the police and fire do. Everybody's looking beyond, the chief, the fire, police chief Myers mentioned the doorbell, that's the only thing that anyone mentioned good about this, out of all the good things that are written in these four pages. I mean, it's just, hey, you know what, we don't care about this, don't tell us what to do. And you gotta look beyond that. I, you know, I wanna, I wanna get our, I wanna get our police and fire department up to where the pay is higher, that new hirees get health benefits. Not too many people know, you know, we have police that joined the police department and they don't have any healthcare.
Okay, councillor.
For years and years.
We got the next, so I'm gonna give you 30 seconds, then we gotta end it. Go ahead, chief.
For the people that are just joining us, the fire chief and the police chief were just provided these when the meeting started, so we had nothing to base this on, so that was not a fair statement from the councilman and I apologize that I have to call you out on that, sir, but this is the first time we're seeing any of these suggestions from you.
That's what this meeting is, to show you guys, we're not making any decisions tonight, this is just a study session.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, at this particular point, the study session for public safety commission is over, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then start the regular council meeting. Thank you. Okay, for those that are in the audience, before we start our meeting, during our last council study session, I'm allowed for public comments, just in case anyone had any type of public comments in regards to the public safety commission which we had a study session on. So for those that have public comments, we'll allow for two minutes each. Please state your name, the city you're from, please.
Hello, is this on?
Nope.
No.
Turn it maybe towards you a little bit, there we go.
You got it? Thanks. Hi, Rachel Lapointe, Dearborn Heights, am I supposed, address, whatever it is, city's good enough, I think. Just wanted to point out, the word formulate has a definition of creating or writing something. It does, all it means is you could write a policy on this commission, but it doesn't mean it has to be enacted by anybody, whatever department it is. So if you're just making suggestions in that advisory capacity of policies that a department, any department could take on, that would be formulating policy. Also, as a resident, it just kinda feels like there's just a lot of arguing against public safety at this point. Like, that seems like something we can kind of all unify on, that public safety is important, there's a lot of issues going on with it, with, you know, the speeding and everything. It's beyond just police and fire, so why not have a dedicated group that's gonna say, "Hey, we're here to be that, that extra advisory board for that." So I think it's a great idea, I think that there's a lot of good things that could be done by this commission, especially working with some of the other groups that are active. So I really hope you guys look at it and talk together and talk with the department heads and get on that because I think it'd be really good. So that's all from me.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you for your continued activism.
Thank you.
Anybody else with public comments in regards to the public safety commission which we spoke about in the last hour? And I see...
Is Tom going?
There he is.
Here we go.
Okay, if you could do me a favor, though, councillor, if you could announce yourself if you are speaking as a resident or as a councillor, please.
Yes.
Well, which one?
I know, it's good. Resident Tom Wenzel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. Councilman Tom Wenzel made a couple of statements at the public hearing that we're not accurate and I'm gonna clear the air, Councilman Wenzel, that the new hiree police, they do have healthcare and there's another issue with healthcare that I'm not gonna even say anything because I don't know the rules, but they're all full-time employees in the city of Dearborn Heights are covered by healthcare. And I wanna apologize to the police department for making a statement about the police officers not being aware of a curfew or the time of curfew. I interviewed, or talked with about 10 of them and that's a small number and I shouldn't have said anything about it, maybe all the other, every other one except for those 10 know exactly when the curfew is. I mean, Mr. Wenzel should know better than to talk without doing his research. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Councilor Chair Proton? Can I...
Yes, go ahead, mayor.
Make one quick comment. I would note that Section 5.9 of the Charter subsection B says, "This commission shall establish and administer the general policies of the police and firefighting functions of the city." So it'd be more than formulate as far as that goes, however, that doesn't mean that you would not, as a body, be able to adopt an ordinance for an advisory group that may suggest policies. But if you're going to base it on Section 5.9 of the Charter, it's actually establish and administer the general policies. So it's a bit more authoritative and also potentially problematic in terms of other legal requirements conflicting with it, like Act 78 or collective bargaining agreements. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My name's Leslie Winless and I'm from Dearborn Heights, I don't know if we're doing full addresses or not, but I just wanted to say that I would also support the creation of the public safety commission and just wanted to point out that all of these commissions follow the Opens Meetings Act, so even if you were not appointed and maybe you didn't live in Dearborn Heights, but you were said officers with this concern, anyone would be able to attend all of those meetings and speak at public comment about anything that they had on their agendas or that they brought up. I personally like to see organization. I do see the neighborhood watch signs, I've seen them since I've moved here, but I've never seen them do anything, I've never seen them like post anything in my mailbox saying, "Hey, we're having a neighborhood watch meeting, we need more people," or "We're gonna be out here on Halloween riding around, you know, helping patrol the neighborhood." Those are like some of the initiatives that I think a commission like this would be able to do. I'm not sure who, at least on the south end, a couple of people that I text and just being as active as I am on the south end, I've never actually seen them meet or organize anything in my neighborhood and that would be in the Van Born Telegraph area. So I would like to see something that was an official, you know, body that met and over teed programs like this. And the other thing that was on here is a connection between the city and the school board as far as safety and the patrolling, especially in light of our little one that just passed away, which I plan to talk about more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. There is, by the way, a gentleman in South Heights, Nancy Prior, probably knows his name, I'm blanking on his name, but the gentleman does a great job on a regular, what was the name?
Frank Zack.
Frank Zack, yeah, on a regular basis, monitors this city, so God bless him. Any other public comments? Seeing that there's no one? All right, at this particular point, just for the audio and video, they have to reset, so we're gonna take just a few seconds break until she's, until Angela's ready.